Good evening, and we'll start. We call together the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, December 14th, 2020. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
What do we do? By the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Alderman Brunelli?
Present.
Alderman Cavalo?
Present.
Alderman Cato? You don't like that? No, you got to do it with the... Alderman Cato?
That's it.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo?
Here.
Alderman Dorso?
Here.
Alderman Hunter?
Here.
Alderman Lopez?
Here.
Alderman Matthews?
Present.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Here.
Alderman Newjame? Alderman Newjame?
Present, sorry, I was trying to unmute.
Alderman Salvio?
Present.
Alderman Weaver? Alderman Zimmerman?
Present.
Alderman Ruski?
Here.
That 13 present, two absent. Alderman Weaver, you're present, right?
I am present.
Okay, we didn't hear you say "here," but I thought I saw you on there, so... All right, so we have 14? 14. 14, okay. We have a core? 14, right?
13.
Who else is?
13.
Yeah, but Weaver's here. We just didn't hear her say "here," so... Okay. The first item then on the agenda is going to be the election of a minority leader to replace Alderman Sherman, who left us after our last meeting. So with that, I will open it up to nominations for minority leader. The nominations, the seconding, and the voting for minority leader are limited to the Republican members of the board. So is there a nomination for minority leader?
I would like to nominate myself as minority leader.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Alderman Zimmerman?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Okay, nomination having made for Alderman Newjame and seconded by Alderman Zimmerman, are there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I would like to nominate myself, Bernie Matthews.
Matthews? Is there a second? Is there a second? One more time, is there a second? Hearing none, then that nomination would fail. Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations.
So move.
No, it's got to be one of the Republicans, Ernie, sorry.
I'll move.
Motion made by Alderman Matthews, is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Alderman Zimmerman. Motions having been closed, then the sole nomination on the floor for minority leader is Alderman Newjame. We'll do this by voice vote. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed, no. Then the ayes have it, the vote is unanimous that Alderman Newjame is the minority leader. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to all my colleagues. I appreciate your trust in nominating me and approving me for minority leader.
Thank you, Alderman, congratulations again. With that, the next item on the agenda would be public speaking. Anyone who was interested should have called in. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak. There's a five-minute limit, and I will give you a one-minute heads-up if we can get the first caller on the line.
Hello?
Hi. Do we have a speaker?
Yes, hello?
Could you hear me? Yeah, go ahead, we can hear you now.
Okay, Martin Spring, 1400 Mirren Road. And I just want to say, before we start the meeting, I want to congratulate Alderman Newjame for being the minority leader. I know a lot of times I called Alderman Newjame, and he was always there to assist me and help me in any way. Hello?
Yep, you're there, go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, I don't know, I thought I got cut off over here. All right, anyways, I wanted to congratulate Alderman Newjame. And I just wanted to say, I also want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope it's going to be a better one in 2021 because, you know, because of COVID and everything, I'm glad we got the vaccine, I'm glad that President Trump had Warp Speed, and this is going to be reality for people, and hopefully this is going to be something that's going to end soon. You know, I mean, the worst thing that I could remember is when, as kids growing up, my dad would talk to us about World War II, how bad it was, especially in the South Pacific, and he couldn't wait to get home because four years overseas, he just, like I said, he was just very happy and delighted to get back home. Okay, I don't know, I'm getting a lot of bad feedback over here, I don't know why, maybe it's on my phone, Mr. President, but I did want to say this, is on Thomason Avenue here in Waterville, I just want to say, by Cumberland Farms all the way down to the entire road towards Durable Radiator, there aren't many lights there for safety concerns. I drove down there with Karen about a couple weeks ago, and I saw a lady walking down the road down there, halfway down the road going toward Durable Radiator. She had a little child with her in the stroller, and I felt really bad, and I felt like picking her up, but, you know, I don't know what's going on, but it was awful sad to see the lady walking down the road like that. So I called the mayor's show when he was on, you know, on the radio on WATR 1320, and he's on the, I guess, the first Thursday of every month, and he thought it was a good idea. I know that's a state road, I'm pretty sure I talked to Alderman, not Alderman, but, he was the Alderman Napoli, but now he's State Representative, Ron Napoli Jr., and he also believes that's a state road. And I was thinking of why not install solar lights on several telephone poles going down, and I also know down south, when I've gone down there, as you guys probably did too, there's a lot of reflectors on the road that people could see at night, but I don't think that would help anybody walking down there, because that's a very dangerous spot, and as you know, a lot of people speed up and down that road. So I was hoping that maybe we could do something to rectify that. Also, I want to say, with the Waterville Human Rights Commission, I'd like to be given our, the entire Board of Aldermen a quarterly report ASAP. And there's a few more things I want to say. You know, the mayor just put a diversity committee together, and unfortunately, there's no member from the Waterville Human Rights Commission was asked to serve on this important volunteer committee. We wanted at least two people from the Waterville Human Rights Commission to work with this administration from our board. Again, we were never asked by anyone, and I just was hoping it could have been come to fruition, because I was kind of like very disappointed with that. And by the way, nobody from, as far as I know, the 21 people that have been selected, nobody from the Waterville Neighborhood Council members weren't picked either, and I don't know why, nor was anybody from the Waterville Community Club asked. And I'm not speaking about myself, because obviously, the people that I wanted from our very diverse Waterville Human Rights Commission meeting to be on that diversified committee would have been minorities anyway, so I just thought I'd let you guys know. Okay, thank you, Mr. President. And also, on ATVs and dirt bikes roaming around the city of Waterville at free will with no regard for anyone's safety, may the city of Waterville consider installing cameras on police cars or telephone poles. And also, before I forget, you know, we got the Christmas tree in Waterville, and I want to thank everybody, you know, Parks Director for helping us out, and Mike Savio, and I, you know, a lot of you people on the Board of Aldermen helped us get that planted and get that set there. And we also got the, you know, the new panel lights on there. But also, I want to let you know that Alderman Savio, just want to let you know, they did put the orange netting in, but unfortunately, that netting is falling apart. I don't know if they got it out of an old shed, but with your permission, being a park board member, I would like to get some money put aside, so we, the Waterville Community Club, could put some nice fencing around there, and we would definitely pay for that. And I think I'm running out of time, but I just want to...
That's time, Marty.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Okay, all right, bye.
Have a nice holiday. Do we have anyone else, or that was it? Okay. After being the last speaker, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, November 16th, 2020. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion approved, the minutes of the regular meeting held via Zoom on Monday, November 16th, 2020, so move.
Alderman Lopez, is there a second?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any changes to the minutes that anyone has? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the minutes as presented, and a no vote will be to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. The next item then would be to recess into Committee of the Whole, Alderman Brunelli.
So move.
Alderman Lopez?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, we're sitting as a committee of the whole. Just as a note before we get to all of the items, items number 13 and 14 at this point have been withdrawn. I think they're still waiting on something from the Department of Transportation before we can go forward with that. So item 13 and 14, new business, have been withdrawn. With that, the first item is the notification of exams for the chief refuse selected, the automotive mechanic, and the assistant city planner received and placed on file. Item number two is the letter of resignation from the Board of Aldermen from former minority leader Sherman, effective November 27th, 2020, which is a receiving place on file. Item number three is the submittal of the City of Waterville's financial status report for October 2020, submitted by Sarah Gary, the management and budget specialist from the Office of Budget Control, which is a receiving place on file. Item number four is the ratified successor collective bargaining agreement between the City of Waterville and the Connecticut Healthcare Associates, National Union of Hospital and Healthcare Employees, AFLCIO. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number four.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
The motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Does anyone have any questions on this? No? Okay, then a yes vote would be to approve the successor collective bargaining agreement, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the successor collective bargaining agreement is approved. Item number five is an agreement in the amount of $150,003 paid via City General Funds for golf professional services at Western Hills Golf Course between the City of Waterville and Jimmy Dean's Golf Shop LLC, and that contract amount is the same as last year. The contract expired, needs to be a new contract in place, but it's the same amount as we had done last year. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number five.
Alderman Lopez?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Are there any questions? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the agreement for golf services at Western Hills, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the agreement is approved. Item number six is an agreement in the amount of $140,004 paid via City General Funds for professional golf services at East Mountain Golf Course between the City of Waterville and Scott Alessio, also the same as last year on that contract amount. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve, item number six.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions, or is there any discussion? And hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve the contract for professional golf services at East Mountain, and no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, the agreement is approved. Item number seven is an amendment three to the agreement with the Connecticut Institute for the Blind Doing Businesses Oak Hill, in the not-to-exceed amount of $1,376,185.72 to provide education services to children with disabilities. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve, item number seven.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the agreement with Connecticut Institute for the Blind Doing Businesses Oak Hill, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the agreement is approved unanimously. Item number eight is a student-teacher affiliation agreement with Central Connecticut State University at no cost for student teaching opportunities. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve, item number eight.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions, or is there any discussion? And hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve the contract with Central Connecticut State University for student teaching opportunities, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the agreement is approved. Item number nine is an agreement with the Brass City Charter School for a three-year period and at no cost to provide transition services for students with disabilities. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve, item number nine.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
The motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve the agreement with Brass City Charter School, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the agreement is approved. Item number 10 is a student-intern affiliation agreement with Southern Connecticut State University at no cost for schools counseling student internships. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve, item number 10.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
The motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions or any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the student-intern affiliation agreement with Southern Connecticut State University, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the agreement is approved. Item number 11 is an amendment number one to the agreement with, at advance, in the not-to-exceed amount of $91,000 to provide transition services to students with disabilities. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve, item number 11.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the amendment to the agreement with at advance, in the not-to-exceed amount of $91 million, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, and the amendment is approved. Item number 12 is the construction contract for Dale Avenue Drainage Improvement between the City of Waterville and Gerber Construction Incorporated in the amount of $145,550.86. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve, item number 12.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
The motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the construction contract for drainage improvement, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item number 15 is a construction contract in the not-to-exceed amount of $150,000 for Washington Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation between the City of Waterville and Dayton Construction Company. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve, item number 15.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the construction contract for the Washington Avenue Bridge Rehab, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item 16 is requesting approval of the following resolution, allowing the city to proceed with submitting the ELUR to DEEP for approval. Resolve that the Board of Aldermen hereby consent and authorize the mayor to transfer to DEEP an interest in the real property located at 526 Huntington Avenue, as more particularly set forth in the ELUR application, and consents to the filing with DEEP of the ELUR application by the mayor on behalf of the property owner, the City of Waterville. Resolve that the mayor pursuant to the authority granted under the city charter, and this resolution is authorized on behalf of the city to execute and deliver to DEEP the ELUR application and the ELUR and any other such documents, certificates, or agreements that the mayor, in his judgment, and after consultation with corporation counsel, may determine to be necessary or desirable to effectuate the foregoing resolution in the name of the city and to do any and all other acts to effectuate the foregoing, and including the recording of the approved ELUR on the land records of the City of Waterville. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve, item number 16.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
The motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is approved unanimously, and the resolution is adopted. With respect to standing committees, there's a request for refunds for tax overpayments in the amount of $13,303.56. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve, refund.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion, or are there any questions? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the tax refunds, the refunds for tax overpayments in the amount of $13,303.56, and no vote will be to disapprove the refunds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the refunds are approved.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Would you like a motion to remove the items from old business?
Let's let those sit for right now, and make sure we're, no, we're going with those. I think we'll just let those stay for now, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. With that, we're through the agenda, so Alderman Brunelli, I would like to obtain a motion to return to the regular order of business.
So move.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, we're now back in the regular order of business, and just to complete the requirements, the following order, items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is receiving place on file, item two and three are receiving place on file, item four is approval, item five and item six are approvals, item seven is approval, item eight, nine, 10, 11 are approvals, item 12 is an approval, item 13 and 14 were withdrawn. Item 12 is, and, I mean, I'm sorry, item 15 and item 16 are approvals, and the refunds for tax overpayments in the amount of $13,303.56 are approvals on the consent calendar. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve, the consent calendar as read.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez?
I second.
The motion having been made and seconded, are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the consent calendar as presented, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved unanimously. With that, we've come to the end of our business, and before we ask for any other things for the good of the order, I just want to remind you that we won't be back until after the New Year, January 11th is our next meeting, so I just, in these unusual times, in this most strange year, want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and I hope that the New Year is happy, healthy, and prosperous, and virus-free for all of us, and that 2021 will be a much better year than 2020 has been. So enjoy the time to the extent that you can with your families for all of you. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Yes, Mr. President.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let everyone know, we're going to have our third annual wreath contest up in Bunker Hill. Ideas in the spirit of the holidays and Christmas to get together, make a wreath, and we put it up on the park fence. So this year, it's been a little delayed, and we'd like to extend it out to the entire city of Waterville, so if anyone would like to have a wreath and submit it for the contest, entries are to be submitted by Sunday, the 20th. And if you drive by the park, my contact information is on the sign, or my cell phone is 203-232-8920. There are also means to hang up your wreath if you'd like to go by the park and hang it up yourself, I just need your contact information if you're entering into our contest. So we'd like to just try to share some holiday spirit amongst the entire city this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, then Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, we're adjourned, we'll see you all after the New Year. Stay safe, stay healthy.
Happy Holidays.
Happy Holidays, everyone.
Happy Holidays.
Happy Christmas, everyone.
Congratulations, George.
Thank you.